Okay, good morning, everyone. It is the appointed hour. It is 10:00 a.m. I'm going to call to order the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners for August 16th, again 10:00 a.m. We will start with a salute to the flag. Mr. Guthro, would you lead us this morning in a salute to the flag? Vincent from NACO.
(Inaudible) to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Of course. Von Hartung Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill Vice Chair is absent. Bob Lucy.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mary Kanderas. And I'm Jan Galassini, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number three, please?
Item three is an appearance and presentation from Vincent Guthro, Executive Director of NACO on the Indigent Accident Fund, a fund created for the purpose of reimbursing hospitals for some of those expenses realized from the treatment of indigent persons injured in motor vehicle crashes in Nevada.
Mr. Guthro, welcome.
Okay, I think you can hear me now. Thank you so much. Thank you for the invitation, Mr. Chair, and to the members of the Commission for having me. As mentioned, I am Vincent Guthro, the Executive Director of NACO, the Nevada Association of Counties, and I appreciate the invitation to speak a little bit about the Fund for Hospital Care to Indigent Persons, or commonly known as the IAF. As I'll discuss later, NACO is charged with administering and staffing the IAF Board of Trustees, so that's my role here today. Given the allotment of time, I plan on giving an overview of this fund, just discussing the dynamics of the IAF that pertain to counties specifically and highlighting some areas that are key to Washoe County. I'm available to answer questions, and I'll apologize in advance if I need to follow up with you offline. This fund, as you'll learn, can be a tad complicated. There's numerous revenue sources and expenditures and board governance and specific uses of the revenue by the IAF Board, and the overall history of the IAF can be a little bit complicated, so I'll do my best to distill the information transparently and understandably, and I'm happy to take questions throughout the presentation or at the end. It's up to you. So, I think, yeah, so, let's see. I'm gonna find the clicker, so. Great, now I know how to work the technology, so. Counties are tasked, every county is required to provide care and support to the indigent. That's under NRS 428.010, and also under 428.030. It outlines the partnership and the support counties in Nevada must provide to hospitals under Medicaid rates and provisions to care for the indigent as well. So, a little history about the IAF. Under the growing liability for counties to pay for hospital costs to indigent persons, the Nevada Legislature created the IAF in 1983. The sole purpose at that time was to provide financial assistance to rural hospitals that treated individuals involved in motor vehicle accidents. The use of these funds have been subsequently expanded, and I'll go into a little bit more about that later in my presentation. The IAF is governed by a Board of Trustees, currently consists of four county commissioners, and there's also an individual that is the Director of County Social Services. NACO makes recommendations to those appointments to the Governor, and then the Governor ultimately appoints to that Board. As I mentioned, the Board of Trustees is responsible for administering the revenues of the fund. They also approve claims, they also approve fiscal year sources and uses of the fund, both of which I'll go over in a little bit more detail sort of later on in the presentation just because they require just a little bit more information. A little bit of information about the revenue held in the fund, they're currently housed or held with the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, but again, it's the Board of Trustees with that majority county commission membership that approves the uses and expenditures. But I just want to make it clear sort of how the different pieces work. So, a little word about the revenue sources. The IAF is funded in four specific ways. Every county in Nevada dedicates 1.5 cents ad valorem of property tax, $100 of property tax is then directed to the IAF fund, or to the IAF. In the counties of Clark and Washoe, there's also an unmet indigent free care obligation, which is also directed to the fund, and I will outline that later on in the presentation as well. Also, under the terms of the auto claim crash reimbursement, there is a $3,000 deductible and is collected for each claim reimbursement for automobile crashes, and that goes into the fund. And then, under the provisions of a very complicated formula called the disproportionate share hospital payment, or DISH, there's a one-set property tax that's collected from counties to fund offsets in our areas that have acute hospitals, which right now are Clark and Washoe, and they fund supplemental payments to hospitals as well. So, a little bit about the indigent free care obligation, and just want to outline the parameters of that. First off, the free care obligation that is assessed to hospitals is calculated and assessed by Medicaid. In counties where two or more hospitals that have 100 or more hospital beds, I hope you're following me so far, Clark and Washoe, currently Clark and Washoe Counties, and under the definition of indigent persons in NRS, the obligation assessed by Medicaid is, it's about point 6% of each hospital's inpatient revenue, so not to get into too much detail, but that's how Medicaid calculates that. Once this is determined on an annual basis, Medicaid informs the hospitals of that total. If the hospital falls below this determined threshold, the hospitals then assess the difference. The difference is the unmet indigent care obligation, and the amounts are then collected from hospitals and forwarded to the IAF. A little word about the unmet, or the, yeah, the indigent free care obligation, with the passage of the Affordable Care Act, or ACA, and subsequent Medicaid expansions, the portion of the inpatient population that meets this defined criteria has essentially vanished, and the unmet care obligation that's collected from hospitals has increased significantly over the past, what are we, seven years now? So, a little word about, just want to talk a little bit about the ways that the fund is used and is distributed, and I'll do, I will sort of dive into a couple of these that are key to counties later on in the presentation. But one is allowable use is to provide assistance to counties to meet our long-term care obligations. They also issue, it also can issue supplemental payments to DHHS to use as the non-federal share of Medicaid. States, the state then uses that money to pull down additional federalized dollars to the state Medicaid program. We also reimburse hospitals for unpaid hospital care for those auto accidents, that's the initial intent of the law, so that we can, we maintain that sort of statutory obligation under IAF. And then, lastly, it pays for NACO's administrative costs to administer IAF. I thought I would include this clear-as-mud sort of flow of funds, but you can see sort of things that go into the fund and then how the payments work out and how the sources work, so, one moment. So, again, one of the things I wanted to dive in on the uses is the assistance with the Long-Term Care County Match Program. The County Match Program outlined in NRS is an intergovernmental partnership between county, state, and federal partners, and in NRS, it outlines the County Match Program in which every county in Nevada provides the non-federal share of the cost of the medical services for eligible county residents and long-term facilities. Couple of provisions, every county must be a member, sorry, every county must participate in the program for this to work. And as mentioned in 2013, so as mentioned, in 2013, with the subsequent Medicaid expansion, the assessments under the Long-Term County Match Program have risen sometimes unpredictably. So, NACO undertook a couple of measures to address those increases. One, we strengthened our partnership with Medicaid and the state to make sure that counties are at the table during those discussions that expand populations, increase assessments, and impact county revenues, and that impact the county share of the Medicaid program. Second, we coordinated notification of those assessments and the needed contracts early on in the process to ensure that counties are protected and that funding the populations and services that we agree to. And third, NACO, at the direction of the NACO Board, we attempted to get some understanding and get our head around some of the significant increases that we were seeing, so we undertook a Medicaid actuarial study to look at those costs and share that information with the state as well. We are seeing some predictability in assessments, while they continue to increase, they're not at the level that they were. Want to take a, just outline a little bit on Medicaid funding in the state. Medicaid reimbursements and state Medicaid funding are comprised of two sources, there are federal funds, but also non-federal funds, which must come from a public source. Public sources of funding in Nevada include state general funds and local and county government funds, as well as funds allocated by the IAF Board of Trustees. The method is pretty state-forward. Federal fund allotments are approved on a quarterly basis by the federal agency, Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, and as reimbursements are issued to providers, Medicaid draws down dollars to issue payments to those providers. Counties contribute to the state Medicaid budget through our Long-Term Care Match Program and ultimately account for about 20% of the state Medicaid budget via the federal dollar pull downs and leveraging of local dollars. So, this is the sources and uses document. As I mentioned, the IAF Board approves this on a fiscal year basis. Sorry, I think it's a type, it's a little, it's a little low, but, a little small, but you can see the sources of the revenue that I outlined earlier, including property tax, unmet free care obligation, and then you can see the uses, including the recently added IAF County Match set aside. So, you'll see that there, and then the ultimate approval. We leave a lot, like I said, still leave money in there for claims. As I mentioned, this is the collective revenue that is deposited into the fund, the uses section reflects the uses that I outlined in the prior slides. I just want to highlight for the IAF Board, the approved County Match set aside. And, let's see, one more thing I wanted to, I wanted to outline for Washoe County, under the approval of that set aside, it looks like to, out to 2023, you'll receive about $7 million to cover your long-term care obligations. You can use that money only for long-term care, but then, of course, it would, you could free up other dollars to use for unhoused populations or other items that fall under that indigent care. So, that's pretty much my rundown of IAF. I'm happy to take questions, and I do, just like I said, wanted to mention the things that are important to counties and that are important sort of to the overview. Like I said, it's a detailed process that has many stakeholders, but happy to take questions from anyone.
Okay, thank you so much. This is, I mean, this is extremely important because we do have an obligation, but we, the funding is always in question. I'm gonna just, I know President Lucy.
Thank you.
President of NACO.
Thank you, sir.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir, I do appreciate it. Mr. Guthro, thank you for coming today and presenting. I think this is a very important topic that many individuals don't understand, the complexity that goes into this, not only within the county, but across the state, and how important it is to those individuals that are underserved within our communities, but for the actual counties to actually fund this, and the types of services that are required in regards to this. So, going back really quickly about the, about the configuration of the Board and the issues that they addressed with the state legislature, one of the issues that I know that are coming up in, probably in the next legislative session in February, is indigent care, and how we, and what we always, and it seems to be like every session that we have, some sort of challenge with the funding. Are there ways that we can shore up that funding and be a little bit more secure, because, you know, it's, this is a challenge when we're talking about indigent care and having to pay for that through the counties, but not having the revenue source be reliable from the state and not really, also reliable from the insurance companies to offset some of that, those challenges as well. Can we talk about the revenue, and I know we, it's backed by property taxes and different things like that, but can we talk about the revenue and the potential shortfalls that we may see in the upcoming legislative session?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think agreeing with you, serving our underserved and underhoused populations is a challenge for every local government, it's a challenge for the state as well, acknowledging that. I think the important thing to remember about IAF is that this is local dollars that we have made sure, to the best extent we possibly can, under the, under the creation of the fund, remains in the local communities that are contributing to the fund. So, and what I mean by that is that the Long-Term Care set aside, it's proportional to the amount that is paid in property tax by the local community and is established in a way to not exceed what folks pay into the fund through their ad valorem rate. So, the other thing is, is that I think when some of the changes are made to expand the Medicaid population, what, my understanding, I wasn't here at that time, but my understanding in the history of that and going through the notes and looking at the sort of the legacy of that, is that there was a commitment made that these were local dollars to stay in local communities. That is my understanding. Now, it's my job to make sure that continues to happen, and we'll continue to engage our county, our Board to, if there looks to be something to be taken away from that. But I think, I think the legislature sees the value in the local dollars staying locally, and I think, you know, they share that opinion that you do. That said, we're always on the lookout for increased assessments, increased costs, shifting of services, shifting of mandates, shifting of responsibilities, so that's, that's part of our job here and my other role as the Executive Director at NACO. But for the IAF fund, those are local dollars that stay in local communities.
I guess the concern, the concern that consistently is, at least for Washoe County, we sit in a very unique place as the second-largest county within the state of Nevada. We're not Clark County and don't have, we can't contribute as much, and, but we're much bigger than the rurals, and the rurals obviously need quite a bit of help with some of their aging population and individuals, but we also, we worry quite often here at this Board that the funds that are paid into the funds aren't necessarily equally brought back and, or at least distributed, and so from what you're telling me, they are, and so that makes me a little bit more, you know, calm and collected about, you know, not trying to continue to fight this, but we, what we need to do is identify, because there are sometimes needs that are rural partners, because if we don't satisfy sometimes the needs within our rural communities, they end up being our problem anyways, and so there's, there's got to be some flexibility with that. And so, we have always, at least from this Commissioner's standpoint, believe that we service a good portion or whatever we can subsidize some of those rural counties in the north, whereas Clark does that same for the counties in the south, those rural counties in the south. And so, we want to continue to do that, but we want to make sure that we're still getting our fair share to make sure that we're addressing the issues here at home.
Yeah, definitely agree, thanks for the words, and I'll fully agree with you, which is why the NACO began having conversations about this, bringing back that, that set aside, because at that point, urban, you know, there wasn't a statewide approach to this, I guess I'll say. So, we agree, right? So, and, and, yeah, I think, I think your, you know, your rural friends would agree too, you know, on making sure that the local dollars stay locally and that we understand. It's a little bit complicated, right? We're one Nevada approach on this, understanding that, as you mentioned, that could become your obligation here. But, yeah, I think, I think that's the goal of IAF, that's the goal of the Board members, and that's the goal of the NACO members as well, so.
You know, and just for some edification for this Board as well, you know, I want to congratulate Mr. Guthro, since he's taken over the role of the Executive Director for NACO, he's really expanded the organization to a way to address a lot of these issues within that, and has just recently, within the last eight months, hired a public health coordinator that not only will help us with public health issues that pertains to things such as the pandemic, but really help Vince with any issues as it pertains to Medicaid, you know, indigent care funds, things of that nature, that will be somebody who can constantly watch it 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so that's not just Vince alone taking this on. Vince has done a phenomenal job at NACO to really address a lot of the major concerns that affect counties at a level that, at least from a state-coordinated level. So, Mr. Guthro, thank you for coming this morning, I appreciate the time, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Guthro. When we say indigent care funding, we're talking about people that can't pay their bills, correct?
Correct, yeah.
It's an inform-level issue, it's all with the formularies, with the feds, and I guess what I'm getting from this presentation, it has changed considerably, and while now we're doing it as a whole state, which we never used to do, which, by the way, also meant we got no federal funds to help us because we didn't, we didn't expend the funds, kind of in the Nevada way ever since I've been here for 23 years, but we've changed that, and so the drawdown to get that also means that, Miss Fair and Square, that's here, a little bit of our money in a situation like that will be used to subsidize other people, and that's an okay thing, because the overall goal, as our, as the President of Nevada NACO said, is you can either fund it at the source or they are going to come here because we have, you know, the hospital facility, so I think you're doing a great job. I, one of my colleagues just mentioned up here, "This is the best hire I ever did at NACO," so, I think that that, and it's somebody that I admire very much and respect their opinion, so keep on trucking with this, it sounds like it's going to be a more, trying to figure this out and put a blanket over everybody with a couple holes in it, and we've just got to, we got to do what we always do, which is try to do what's for the greater good, but not too much on the backs of the great taxpayers of Washoe County, but to a certain extent, I mean, if we really want to get into this, listen, Las Vegas, Clark County is 3 million people, we're half a million barely, so we are sort of pipsqueaks in terms of numbers, and we also get subsidized by them as well. So, it almost sounds like Washoe County is in that missing middle, which we talk about when we're looking at healthcare, housing. If you're really poor, we usually have programs for you and a place to put you. If you're really rich, why do you care, right? You get concierge service from your doctor and make your own housing, but the missing middle is kind of Washoe County. And figuring out how to move in there in a way that doesn't hurt our rural partners, because I do believe in preserving their lifestyle, their, you've been the biggest cheerleader of, you have to make it to, where was I'm supposed to go?
Ely.
Yeah, White Pine County, and I think there is something to be said about preserving that, and it gives the state a nice flavor rather than a monolith. But, Mr. Guthro, thank you for being here. I know I asked for this, this item, and it's something I often watch, mostly because we give indigent care funding to the hospitals, some of which consider themselves nonprofit, some of which consider them for-profit. The nonprofit one, by the one, has Choluli Glass and Grand Piano, so that's not the way I think about a nonprofit, but that's neither here nor there, which means they don't pay property tax, sales tax, all of the good things that keep this, keep us up here doing stuff. So, I just like to keep an eye on it and to feel like NACO, and listen, I know you have a hard role, because you got two, you got one be a myth, one the best, of course, Washoe County telling you what to do, because we have our, you know, we're small enough to know what we're doing, and then you have the small rural counties who are human beings and need treatment and care and life and manifest all of their great destiny that they're here on earth for, so I just appreciate you so much, and I'm so glad to see you here, and I'm happy to hear that you're in charge of Nevada NACO. I knew that, and I should have called you and told you, congratulations, which I haven't, because it's been wild the last two and a half years, but I am just glad to see you, and if you need anything from us, or you did say if we have any follow-up questions, you'll help us too, but I think that having us all at least on the same playing field going into the legislature is going to help right-size this too, because I've been doing this for 15 years and I'm still murky about indigent care, and it has changed a lot, but it's, it is a valuable piece that keeps our hospitals in business too, right? If we weren't paying for people that can't pay their hospital bills, you know who's going to be paying it? You guys. So, we're, we're picking that up on the government side of that too, so it doesn't get pushed down to all of us, whether we have insurance or we pay for cash. So, I'm super proud you're here, and I, I say this every time, I'm so glad you're from northern Nevada too, when we have these statewide conversations, because I think we have a flavor that's a little different than the rest of the place, and we'd like to preserve that and enhance it. So, I appreciate you for being here, Mr. Guthro, thank you so much.
Great, thanks so much for the kind words. My job is to balance those interests, so happy that they're getting acknowledged, and if you ever have compliments or complaints, my number's up on the screen, so, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. The nonprofit status is a burr under my saddle, believe me.
Churches too.
We won't go there, we're not agendized to do that. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Guthro, for being here, and I really appreciate your hard work in getting this started and getting a fund for those important people that need that help. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have just a quick question. So, does, does indigent mean also, does it, does it include uninsured, folks who just don't have insurance? Do they come under the indigent category?
Correct, so, so that's why, under the ACA, you saw that massive expansion in those funds, because one of the criteria is uninsured.
Okay.
Right? So, and under ACA, you, you had insurance, you required, you, well, initially, were required to have insurance, so that's why that, that pot got larger, among other things, but you, correct, to answer your question, yes.
Is National NACO still trying to get more funding for this, for the states across our country?
So, so the National Association is doing a few things on the Medicaid piece. One of them is the Medicaid inmate exclusion, where people lose Medicaid benefits when they go, which creates a whole nother burden on us at the county level. They're always working on funding, they're always working on increasing that partnership, because as I mentioned, it's all levels of government on the Medicaid side, on the, on the indigent care side, I guess we should say. It's, it's the federal-state-local partnership, especially in Nevada, it's critical because of the funds that, that counties put forward for them to pull down additional dollars. Oh, yeah, they're always working on additional funding and understanding of that partnership too, but also flexibility at the local level, because what you need in Fulton County, Georgia, isn't the same thing that you need in Eureka County, right? So.
No, and I have to applaud National NACO, most people don't realize this organization even exists, and how much work they do in Washington DC to defend counties across the nation for a number of issues, and it's, healthcare is just one of them, it's infrastructure and emergency services, and, I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on. It's really quite amazing how diverse the organization is. I appreciate you being here. Commissioners, any other questions?
Thank you, thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number four, public comment. Would you take us into that?
Item four is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you take us into public comment?
Certainly. First up, we have Elise Weatherly, followed by Mark Newman.
Ms. Weatherly, welcome.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly. Can you trust me? Am I, am I lying? Am I who I say I am? What I decided to do today was wear my business clothes, my executive clothes. When I wear my executive clothes, which, by the way, I can still sort of fit into them, do you listen to me more? Am I lying? How about if I wear my blue collar clothes, like I have done sometimes? Are you going to listen to what I have to say, or am I a liar? What about if I were on my ranch clothes or my rock band clothes? Are you guys going to believe that I'm telling the truth or not? Let me give you a little background, because eventually, everybody's going to have to be held into account. We'll call this the Applications Systems Documentation and Fiesta Mexicana Day for me today, right? So, when I was working at IT in that windowless brick building on Bassett Street, because somebody had recommended I go there, and I didn't trust him with certain things, but I thought, why not? I was bored, I was the IT person and I was bored, so you know what I did? I checked the documentation. I found a situation that addressed a problem that we had that nobody could find before. You know what those people did to me? They turned me into a boss, and I'm going, I don't want to be a boss, being a boss is too hard. Do you guys remember hearing about HIPAA? I had my eyes rolling in the back of my head when I found out about HIPAA, and I'm going, well, this isn't going to work. ACA, when I read the documentation for ACA, my eyes rolled in the back of my head. I knew it wasn't going to work, but I did what a good accountant does, you know, maybe a good neighbor that doesn't lie, cheats still, and issue false allegations. I checked with the state of Nevada, I said, how much did we spend on that website? It was millions, and I knew my daughter, she would be classified as an indigent, right? She, she's not going to pay for anything, and I knew that that's what a lot of people that didn't have insurance were going to do, not pay for it. So, there's all these, you know, fees and fines and stuff racked up, so let me tell you what I did, I'm going to try to make this fast, but I never do. So, in 2015, I was given, you know, the diagnosis that I'd be dead in four months, but I heard this other voice that never lies to me saying, "I'll sustain you." Well, when I was being wheeled through the hospital, where, by the way, my mother was not allowed to play that grand piano, so I went and was going to tip the tables, and I met Don Ree from Gaylord's instead, it was worth, it was worth the time. I was telling people the truth. I go, I don't know how long I'm going to be sustained, that wasn't mentioned in this documentation, but I'm going to be sustained. Well, guess what? It's almost seven years. So, I was preaching the gospel to these people while they're pushing me through the hospital to say, "I know who to trust." Why? Because I tested it, that's why. So, what I'm going to ask is, are these public comments recorded? Can other people go back and do research on them? Are the emails recorded? Because what I will say in closing is what I have learned is that God records everything. Anybody that thinks they're going to not stand in front of God because you just disappear when you die, surprise!
Thanks, guys. Mark Newman, followed by Cliff Low.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Mark Newman. I'm here for the, your last agenda item on today's thing at the Highland Village. And you're asking for the high density to be put in at, at, uh, that location. Sun Valley has a master plan and in the Sun Valley master plan, there is a thing for medium density, which is three units per acre. When they originally Highland, the Highland Vill- uh, Village came in and did the community talk, they were supposed to stay within similar housing, which is all around them, which is three units per acre. And it's been changed and changed. Now they're asking for 4.5 units per acre. And all that's going to be entering on and off of the Highland Ranch Parkway. And that's an awful lot of houses with little tiny yards for the working class people. If we could keep it down to where they asked for the last time was, I think it was 3.6 units per acre. And that was, everybody was happy with. You guys have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cliff Lowe.
Welcome, Mr. Lowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Cliff Lowe, resident of Washoe Valley, in particular, West Washoe Valley. Um, I only managed, um, had time for a few hours of sleep last night, so I'll apologize if I'm less coherent than usual. Um, a few weeks ago, on July 22nd, um, we had a meeting, a concurrent meeting with city councils of Reno and Sparks. The main topic of conversation was regionalization. Most of you spoke at that meeting and spoke with great passion and concern for people getting help for their lives and their property as fast as possible. And as is often said, people don't care what, what the uniform is. They want help, they want it fast. 11 days later, Fire Station 30 at Bowers Mansion closed indefinitely due to a bat infestation. How do you, how would you feel? How do you think my neighbors and I feel with the sudden closing of the station? How would you feel for your loved ones? Chief Moore, and I'm, I'm, I'm not here to second guess Chief Moore. There are those who have conspiracy, there, this is a time, an age of conspiracy theories. So there are a lot of theories that are bouncing around amongst my neighbors. I'm, I don't, I try not to take part in conspiracy theories. Um, as the press release says, um, wow, time's going fast. Press release says that two people in the ambulance were moved to Station 32. Time matters. Station 32 is five and a half miles from the Bowers Station. It's another three miles from the Bowers Station to Bellevue, eight and a half miles. Three weeks from today, you will sit as the Board of Fire Commissioners. I'm asking you between now and those three weeks to make sure that that agenda includes addressing this matter specifically and that, and that, and that you are prepared and that Chief Moore brings you more options, perhaps multiple options, that will allow you to approve corrective action on September 6th. That'll be five weeks, 35 days with a closed station. There are multiple, a multitude of possible solutions. I'm just going to throw some things out there because this might, this is a time to think outside the box. Get a double wide and set it up either at Station 30 or put it over the volunteer station at Bellevue. I was there. There is a station, no living quarters. It can handle equipment. Maybe you just get two people in a rescue unit there. Get an RV, a fifth wheel, FEMA housing. There are any number of things. Justice delayed is justice denied. Can't the same thing be said about fire and EMS?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katrina Dale, followed by Scott Finley.
Hello. Good morning. I am not used to doing anything like this. So thank you all. I am a resident of Washoe Valley and the Bowers Fire Station closing is a concern to me. There are options available. Mr. Lowe does have plenty listed and a few others that he didn't get to bring in. I would also like to ask that in your upcoming meeting, maybe you expedite the, now that we've already voted to combine the two east and west fire stations, having that done sooner. Having that new fire station built in old Washoe City quickly. I mean, sometimes we can do things when we really want to. And if that can get done sooner rather than in two years from now, that would really help everybody. And I don't know what else. Thank you for listening. I do appreciate it.
Scott Finley. I do have documents to distribute as he approaches the podium.
Would you hold off for just a moment, sir? And let the clerk distribute the documents?
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 you're okay. You can, you can certainly stay there. We're not going to start your timer yet because we're going to distribute the documents first so that we have them in our hands.
And, uh, need the overhead projector too, please. Please enter my comment into the records per NRS 241.035. My name is Scott Finley. I'm a resident of Washoe County. I have a military background of over five years in the financial management and comptroller career field. I have several important questions that I would like official verification on. For the first question, what does the registrar of voters do with the signed envelopes of mail-in ballots? And what role, if any, do the signed envelopes of mail-in ballots play in a recount? If a mail-in ballot, for question two, if a mail-in ballot is scanned as en route to the registrar of voters but never arrives, how does the registrar of voters resolve this issue? Is the resolution to this is that a new mail-in ballot is issued by the registrar of voters? If this is the resolution and two virtually identical mail-in ballots with the same numbers and barcode arrive at the registrar of voters, how is this discrepancy resolved? For question three, again, if the registrar of voters' resolution is to issue the, a new mail-in ballot, what safeguard is in place to guarantee that the lost mail-in ballot that never arrived, doesn't arrive at a later date, automatically overriding the newly issued mail-in ballot due to having an earlier date stamp and scan issued by the United States Postal Service? And for the last question, what, when the board addresses 7.8.1, could it please provide official verification on the name of the temporary hiring company or companies that provided temporary workers for early voting, election day, and the election recount? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Staff, would you make sure that we have contact information for Mr. Finley so that, so that staff can answer the, the questions? Okay? Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, there is nobody else signed in in chambers, but I do have an email to place on the record from Aaron Katz.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will close public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number five.
Item five is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Okay, Mr. Manager, um, hold on just a second. Commissioner Jung, will you please take the podium? Do we have another Commissioner Jung? Commissioner Jung, please take the podium. Don't take it with you. You can't take it up to your office. This is not nefarious. Just, just go. The manager is going to meet you there. Mr. Manager, the floor is yours.
Tess, for the record, uh, county manager Eric Brown. And, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm here to acknowledge the 15 years of continuous county service for Commissioner-
She's squirming like my dog when I cut her nails.
Kitty Jung. Um, and, uh,
Thank you.
I'd like to present you with your 15-year pin and certificate. And may I, and may I say, I've only had the pleasure of serving with you for two and a half years. And you have been a great, great source of guidance for me personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Jung, congratulations.
It's the longest job I've ever had.
Thank you, everybody. And I want to say this is the longest job I've ever had in my life, 15 years. So this is kind of scary leaving it in January, but I sure appreciate all of you and I appreciate the pin. And I thought after 15 years, you get a gold watch, but that might be from a different generation, right? But thank you. You scared me to death. I thought I was getting arrested because the cops started coming down and-
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Manager, do you have any other items?
I do have one other update for the commission. Um, on last, uh, on, on July 22nd, as has been previously mentioned, uh, there was a concurrent meeting between the Washoe County Board of, uh, of Commissioners and the Reno and Sparks City Councils. At that meeting, um, there was agreement to collaborate on exploring how to best regionalize our dispatch, EMS, and fire services for better performance and responsiveness across the region. A work for, a work group was also established and agreed to have, uh, made up of stakeholder agencies around the region, including entities like, uh, Remza, Trucking Metals Fire, Reno Fire, Sparks Fire, et cetera. And, uh, my report to you this morning is we had the first meeting of that, uh, group last Thursday. Um, and, um, the, the meeting went, uh, extremely well. It was less than an hour. Tells you a little bit about the, the state of agreement amongst the agencies. We did review, um, the, the, uh, the mission and, um, deliverables that were approved but at the concurrent meeting and shared those with, uh, the stakeholder agencies, gave them an opportunity to provide input, disagreement. Uh, there was no disagreement, uh, and so we moved forward. I think the next step is, uh, we're, we're working to identify, uh, a facilitator, uh, who will help, um, work through the process of, uh, how we implement the regionalization. It is, everyone has been in very clear agreement that we're not interested in further studies. Uh, we want to get things done. Um, and, uh, so that, uh, is something the managers will be working on over the next week or so. And, uh, I'll continue to provide updates, uh, as they become available, but I just thought I would share that I think we're off to a good start. And, um, we're, we're looking forward to bringing back to you a plan that, uh, everybody can be, uh, proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in first.
I believe I'm online. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to put on the record, um, a comment. I heard early this morning that, uh, one of our elected people in the county has had their life threatened. And it, it is not a laughing matter. It is very serious. I have had the same experience several times while I've been here. And, uh, I know it's not pleasant. And I wanted to comment that whoever is guilty of this is, it's, it's just not good. But, uh, I just wanted to say that I understand completely what you're going through and it's not fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I have nobody else signed in, so I'm going to jump in first. First of all, I wanted to thank staff and Endot for the hard work that was done to get a light at Egyptian and Sunset Springs. It is long overdue, um, and I'm eternally grateful. I'm hopeful, and I see Mr. Solero in the back of the room and I don't see Mr. Smith in the room, but I'm also, I'm hopeful that we can start doing some studies on Eagle Canyon. Eagle Canyon is just, we have, we have got to solve that problem, um, in conjunction and in concert with RTC. Um, and so that's, that's, um, to me, that's, if we can just get that process started, understand what needs to happen, the amount of, of right-of-way that has to be acquired or if any has to be required. But it's, it's just, it's got to be dealt with. Um, and so I'm, um, again, thankful for the, the, um, the light. Um, I can tell you that it'll, it's a little bit of an inconvenience for some of the folks on the Pyramid Highway, but it's a great asset to the folks coming out of, uh, that subdivision. Um, and then there's multiple subdivisions on that east side of the highway, not to mention the buses that have had to traverse, uh, essentially five lanes of traffic, two going each direction and then a turn lane in the center. Um, and it's, and, and I have, I have just had my fingers crossed and said a lot of prayers that there was not, um, uh, an issue there with a, a bus full of kids trying to get across the highway. So thank you, thank you, thank you, staff, for the hard work that was done and, and it is operational now. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate it. Comments, I do have a couple of comments as it pertains to, um, uh, public safety and some transportation issues. One, first and foremost, um, you know, we do still have, uh, I, I do want to thank, um, Endot. I think, you know, we spent a lot of time beating up on, uh, our state partners because we don't feel that we're being adequately addressed or our needs are being heard. Um, and sometimes it's easier to point blame than to work with each other and try to identify a reasonable path forward. And, you know, Endot has an entire state of individuals that have to hear their challenges and concerns. And, and they do. They have focused quite significantly on a lot of places up here. Um, I hope to continue that they are, the improvements that they look at along, um, Mount Road, the Mount Rose Corridor and out through the, the south, uh, parts of Washoe Valley, um, to improve safety. And I know that's always been their mission. One of the challenges though, is that, you know, we, quite often I've been, I've heard from, uh, a number of residents, you know, the safety issue about speeding along these interstates and the corridors and what can we do to improve, um, the enforcement of, uh, of speeding, not only in school zones, not at schools back in session, but along these corridors. And the challenge is, is that, that, which a lot of us are seeing across the state and throughout our government agencies is that, um, staffing, we have, we are severely understaffed in a number of our agencies. Reno Police Department, Washoe County Sheriff's, uh, the Department of Public Safety, Nevada Highway Patrol, um, the State Police, uh, all are suffering from a shortage of individuals. And so to adequately enforce in these areas, it makes it difficult. You can only do so much with so many people. And we have, uh, a number of, of, of individuals out there on the, on the roads to address those, but just not enough. So, you know, I, it's a kind of, it's a friendly reminder to everybody, you know, please be cautious on the roads. School is back in session. We do have kids out there. Um, you know, I'd like to look, um, this is kind of getting off the, the topic a little bit, but I'd like to look at some of the school zones, Mr. Manager, within, um, District Two. I know obviously Galena High School, there's quite a few, um, off of Butch Cassidy. Uh, there are some new school zones going in, uh, along, uh, new schools going in, uh, in Demone Ranch area, um, that speeds are in excesses, in excess. And, um, when you have young children from ages five, six, and up, uh, crossing major roads and, and intersections, um, and individuals, commercial traffic, truck traffic, not paying attention, um, it's going to end up in, in a catastrophe. And so I, I really would like to look at how we can help, um, if it's, uh, an issue, a funding issue with the school district or with the city of Reno or city of Sparks, wherever that may be, or just in our own backyard, within the incorporated area, what we can do to do some of these improvements, at least within those school zones for crosswalks and, um, and, you know, sidewalks for these, these kids can adequately and safely, uh, traverse to and from school. Um, one other question, uh, one other request that I would have for staff is that I would, I have met with recently, um, the elected officials in Story- have met with recently the elected officials in Story County. One of the issues that still continues to be of challenge is in the East Trucking River Canyon. We do have, so we share, you know, being that I-80 and the Trucking River are the dividing corridors between our counties, we share a lot of issues out through that canyon. And that canyon is very important, not only to the county, to the state, but to the tribes as well. We rely heavily on the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center to provide jobs, some very new innovative, high-paying jobs to a number of people. But the challenge continues to be the I-80 corridor and the traffic and, and some of the homeless population that we see living along the river. I'd like to get a meeting, Mr. Manager, with you, and hopefully, Manager Austin, I can't think of Austin's last name, but Austin and, and Chairman Carmona, and have a discussion about how we can address that. There are some challenge, there are some interesting developments that will be coming in July of next year, being the special abatements of that area are going to be removed. And so I'd like to be, have this board and this county be adequately prepared for when those challenges, because we do serve as a, the homes and secondary and tertiary businesses for a lot of that workforce that lives, I mean, that, that provides the services for that tri-center to exist. And so I want to make sure that we have some sort of a memorandum of understanding with them going into those, the legislative session and what we can do to address that, and, and then also work with them. I know Lockwood, the interchange at Lockwood, we have, I know Commissioner Jung was out for the FedEx opening in Mustang. We've had a number of businesses that are now in Washoe County, Apple being one of those FedEx. We have some major, major that we see benefit from, but we need to help Story County and help them with, they're in the midst of their capital improvement plan. What can we do to adequately address some of those, those transportation challenges for years to come, whether that's the continuation of our lands bill and creating the connection or the northeast connector from La Pasada, and that could take up to 10 years? But I think it, there's some probably low-hanging fruits, some stuff that can be addressed immediately to, to challenge some of those, those issues out through the East Trucking River Canyon. So those are some of my requests this morning. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's Austin Osborne. It's Mr. Osborne. And Commissioner Lucy is being a little humble here. He and I have worked with RTC on a program where we're trying to get, we did get a little bit of money set aside. It was a couple hundred thousand bucks set aside. We're trying to get about three million set aside. We'll call it a complete streets program to address the issues that Commissioner Lucy was referring to with respect to making residential areas safer. Everything from better striping to putting in radar signs that are, are solar powered. And so those are, those are just some of the things, and, and I want to commend Commissioner Lucy for working on that with me. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It just came to my mind when Commissioner Lucy mentioned that the tax abatements that Story County has so graciously given to the Tahoe Regional Industrial Center, it reminds me of, that these are now expiring next July. It reminds me now when I had seen, I saw the Mr. Osborne, Austin Osborne, and a couple of the other Story County people, management and elected, many years ago in Colorado at a terrible cop conference, who thinks that they, cops think they set policy about marijuana, whatever. It was the worst conference I've ever been at, but I was there with Story County, and I had said to them, "You got all this money? You should be paying for everything around here." And they reminded me, "We have no money right now. Kitty, it's going to be 10 years before..." So that was 10 years ago. "Is it going to be 10 years till we get all of that taxing?" As they gave all those ta, didn't give it away. They never had it coming in the first place, but they had abated all of these property taxes and sales taxes to make us more attractive than like Texas, which I don't think you need to do anything to be more attractive than Texas. That's just my opinion. But they, we did that as a state with governor money, government money, your money, to be, to be attractive to the Teslas of the world. Well, now that's coming home to roost, and I think that is so smart that we're thinking about it this July or August, because we also subsidized a lot of that, what Mr. Commissioner Lucy was trying to say. This was a time that Story had nothing coming in from it, other than the promise that in 10 years lots will be coming in from this, and we should, I'm not going to say have our hand out, but I think we should be working as a larger county to make sure that anything that we can help further with, as well as they can help us in the way that this has changed the growth projections even around here. You know, rent is higher in East Sparks than it is in downtown Reno right now, and it's directly because it's closer to drive in and out to this major employment center. And I have no problem with employment centers. I think they're terrific. I just think what the Commissioner brought up is very important, and that management and the legislature, everybody's going to be thinking this. We're not the first ones, but I think, of course, I can make an argument for anything I want, but I do believe we are the most affected by these property tax abatements that they are now going to come home and make some money off of. And I think that's basically what everybody is saying, but I'm trying to put a finer point on it, and we need to be out there making sure that we can share the wealth with them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lucy, have you signed in again?
Thank you, Chairman. And there was one last thing, I guess I missed in my edification of what I was trying to get to as well, is that I would like to put a request in with Sheriff Balaam, kind of round robin back to my statement. With the enforcement issue, NHP does not have a whole lot of, of individuals placed on I-80 that can help control that speed along that corridor. And when you have haul trucks from major construction companies, you have FedEx, you have all these different trucks on I-80, which is only a two-lane highway eastbound and westbound, but you also have residential traffic from, from Lockwood, Mustang area, you have, you have work traffic from Patrick and USA Parkway, but those, but the jurisdiction for this, for Story County is not on I-80, and they cannot put sheriffs over there. Only we can alongside of DPS. And so I would like to work on that type of some sort of an MOU, not only financially, but how can we help them with enforcement or do some sort of, and I, and so I have a meeting set with the sheriff to discuss that, but I think there is a financial portion of that to offset some of those things that Story County is willing to do if they can provide more enforcement to that area for speeding along the I-80 corridor, because the I-80 corridor does lie specifically within Washoe County, which allows for our jurisdiction to oversee that. And if DPS and NHP can't adequately patrol that, then is there something we can do to help improve that type of enforcement along that corridor? So just something I would like to, if this commission can look at, not necessarily from an operations standpoint, but, you know, what would it take if a plan was to be put together with the state and Story County? What, fiscally, what would that take to help offset the, the type of enforcement and improve that kind of safety along the corridor? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, good thoughts. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close item number five. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number six, donations?
Item number six is donations, and Mr. Chair, we have 6A through 6B1.
Commissioner Jung, would you take us through donations today? Would you do that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 6A1, 6 Alpha 1 is $3,210.34 from businesses, organizations, and individuals for the Regional Parks and Open Space Program and facilities. So these are donations from all of you lovely users of our parks that we are very proud of, and we do have a ranger station at all of the different parks where you can put your spare change or dollars into as well, because we need every little bit we can with the great open space we have here. We also are accepting a $300,000 donation from the Wilbur May Foundation, fabulous partners of ours for generations, and why that Wilbur May Foundation and the, the whole attraction at the Arboretum is still running there. $200,000 for general operating support for it, and $100,000 for restricted resource. So thank you, Wilbur May Museum, and I, their granddaughter lives here as well. I haven't seen her in years, Ms. May. What's her name?
Dixie.
Dixie. I called her Daisy. She don't like that. So Dixie May. And I just think they're a fabulous family, and they've done so much for our master gardening and all the things that we love to do out there at the Rancho Sam Raffel Park and the Wilbur May Foundation and the Wilbur D. May Museum. And then we also had dental kits donated to the Nevada Cares Campus from Liberty Dental Plan in the amount of $328, which is so gratefully accepted, as well as, again, that our, our campuses, in which we're helping the less fortunate, can use all the help that we can get from anybody. And, and the way that I've now kind of been reframing this is, don't forget, the average American is three paychecks away from experiencing a homeless situation. So the way I look at it is I'm paying it forward in some voodoo way that I live in in my mind, hopefully that will never happen to me. So I hope you get encouraged that same way. And then finally, Regional Animal Services, this, this community is wildly in favor of the voiceless of all species, and we have received $6,966.77 for the last quarter to be used for the humane care and treatment of a sick or injured stray, abandoned, or at-risk animals who can't take care of themselves. So I want to thank all the generous donations here, and I hope it's motivated the rest of you to maybe make a donation, or we can always use a volunteer to shovel horse manure. We have kennel cleaners. We have dog walkers. You can rent a dog to take out, did you know this, to go hiking? If you don't, it's the best way to meet people, no matter what your gender. You can take a dog out on the trails with you from the Humane Society. So this is so they don't get kennel crazy, and you, and you know, we're sneaky. We also think you're going to take it home. So please, please join us in all of these wonderful and such, I don't think I've ever lived in a community with people that were so generous of, to not just basic care, Mr. Chairman, but for bigger and better. Should I also do the donations that we have from commissioners?
That'll go to item seven.
Okay. That's a motion for item number six, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. And Commissioner, I just want you to know that I asked you to do that because all of these things are near and dear to your heart.
Aw, thank you.
So, and parks and, and et cetera. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion for item number six by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Lucy. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
On item 6B1, Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Weatherly, welcome.
Hello, Elise Weatherly. As far as I can tell, I'm still the same person. I want to say something very interesting. I heard a report from a guy that I don't know really well, but I trusted him that something big was going to happen in the news the next day. So I took a little peeky poo at the news, you know, something I don't do very often. And guess what? It was about the Nevada Cares Campus. There were some complaints and stuff going on about it. And all I would say is that from an IT and an accounting perspective is just don't take anybody's word for anything, right? Investigate. But when I see this about Liberty Dental Plan, I've had experience with Liberty Dental Plan, Mount Rose Pediatric Dentistry, I wish I could drive down there every day and give that dentist a hug, but you know, it's too far away from Sun Valley. So I will say I'm grateful for what we're getting. As far as dogs and horses and stuff go, I told my doctor the other day, I said, "Now that you're an empty nester," I said, "you need a dog and a horse," but I forgot to tell her, "Make sure they like each other." That's it for now. I think Fiesta Mexicana is next on the list. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by, is there any other public comment? I'm sorry.
No, sir, there's not.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Lucy. We have taken public comment. Is there any other discussion on these items? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number seven, our consent agenda.
Item seven is the consent agenda, and Mr. Chair, I have no changes.
Commissioners, any questions on the consent agenda?
I have one.
Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some questions on 7C1.
Good.
And I remember, maybe longer than a year ago, but about a year ago in my, my memory, a very stressed gentleman was here saying that he hadn't been paid for COVID kits and testing. And I just was curious if this was the same situation that is in 7C1. Did we, did we, did we ever pay him anything, or is this regarding that? I just would like that answer.
Okay. Mr. Manager, who do we have that can answer that question? Is it, is it you, Mr. Solero? I see that you're starting to get up. That is item 7C, 7 Charlie 1.
Good at.
Mr. Solero, welcome.
Good morning. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. Commissioner Herman, I'm unclear on who exactly came and said they hadn't been paid for this, but I know that our comptroller, working as the Finance Section Chief for the, for the COVID response, has been working with Sarah Care, as well as the District Attorney's Office, to make sure that we can get to the point where the payment is approved and appropriate for the services that we did receive from Sarah Care. I don't know if there can, I don't know if the, the two are, are the same or not. So I really don't have that, that answer for you, but I do know that Ms. Hill has been working with the District Attorney's Office to make sure that we are, you know, following all the protocols that we need to make sure that this claim with Sarah Care and the, and the test kits that we received is resolved appropriately.
Could you maybe dive a little deeper into that and see what you can find out for me?
I can certainly go back and maybe you and I can meet afterward and see if you can recall a name, and we can get to, get to that as well.
Thank you.
Just to see if there, but I do know that, you know, the Comptroller's Office has been doing a really good job of trying to get to the bottom of everything and, and close this all out for us.
Oh, I know. They're very good at it.
So for the record, County Manager Eric Brown, I believe what's going on here, Commissioner, is that there was a dispute originally around the delivery of the test kits that we had resolved, that has since been resolved. And I think what you're seeing here is the $800,000 payment went to them, and we're, we had to get the documentation corrected so that we could apply for FEMA reimbursement.
So he has been paid?
I can't swear to it. I will get you an answer, but I think that...
Thank you.
But we wouldn't be applying for reimbursement if, if there wasn't a payment made. That's my point, too.
Yeah. It just, you know, I was trying to put the two together, and it just didn't, didn't make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Solero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solero. Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda, Commissioners? Okay. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda, which is item number seven?
We do, Mr. Chairman. On item 7D1, we have Elise Weatherly.
Okay. Ms. Weatherly, welcome.
Hello, Elise Weatherly. What I want to say is that what you guys talk about makes me think about other things that are more deeply, like, for instance, every single person that's ever been alive is going to die. What do you do with the remains, right? And so it's like, one of the things I'm trying to do to put my house in order is to make sure that I don't leave the burden of figuring out what to do with me to the 18-year-old that's under my care by the grace of God and Judge Egan Walker. So all I will say is I'm going to make sure that my, if, if you guys have to inter me, is that a removal? Anyway, if you have to do that, because it's like, you don't know, you know? I watch all these episodes, I'm going, "Well, it didn't seem like murder, but now there's more evidence that it might be." And so you want to have the, you know, access to that body, unfortunately. So what I've decided to do is as much as I would like to be buried on the Paiute land, I haven't gotten any response yet. I don't want to be cremated. I would love to be in a tomb, because that's what the risen king was in, right? Before he was raised from the dead. I'll just get a grave. I'm going to get the cheapest pine box I can, have it easily accessible to you guys, and when you finally figure it out that I'm not going to kill myself, and the medical community says I'm supposed to be dead, but I'm not, you'll have easy access to me, but don't bring flowers. Okay? Now I'm going to go do Fiesta Mexicana. Bye, guys.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, on item 7F2, we have... Mr. Chairman, on item 7F2, we have Monica Miles.
Okay. Welcome, ma'am.
Good morning.
Nice to see you.
Good morning, Manager Brown, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Monica Miles. I'm the Community Development Manager for Nevada Donor Network. It's so nice to see you all again. I'm commenting in reference to something that's coming up next, I think, a very nice donation to Nevada Donor Network in honor of one of our mutual friends, Nancy Ponti. And, Mr. Chairman, I know that you share this feeling with me, that we've had the honor of getting to know Haley Ponti through her brave mother, Nancy. Nancy has carried on the legacy of her daughter Haley. Haley was an organ, eye, and tissue donor at the age of just 19. And at that young age, she did make the choice to be a registered donor. And so, Nancy has worked with Nevada Donor Network for many years to advocate for organ, eye, and tissue donation, as you all do as well. And so, I know, Mr. Chairman, that you have entrusted us with a donation in honor of Nancy and Haley. And I just wanted to be here today to thank you for your generosity and for the county's generosity and for your support of our mission. We are very, very grateful, and we promise to use these funds in a way that will make you, the county, and the Ponti family proud. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, ma'am. That's, that's lovely.
Next up for item 7F5, we have Keith Lockard.
Members of the Commission, Manager Brown, good morning. I'm Keith Lockard, 925 Peace Pipe Loop, which is in the unincorporated southwest Washoe County area. Speaking to you on this item, which is the Regional Evacuation Shelter and Mass Care Plan, though on the consent agenda, I think deserves a bit of highlighting, because of its importance relative to the safety of Washoe County residents, that is the priority I think we all recognize. And I wanted to call your attention just to a couple of items in the plan. Section 7.5 provides for county emergency management to be responsible for testing this plan through local drills, table drop exercises, and functional exercises. I think that's critically important, so the men and women who actually execute that plan to assure the public safety of Washoe County residents, they've had that drill and can execute it as needed. And I think you do these actions, but I wanted to call your attention to that importance. Secondly, in looking at the plan, not unexpectedly, wildland fire is the highest hazard ranking. Indeed, we're seeing higher temperatures now than when I was growing up. It's several degrees Fahrenheit warmer on an average basis. And of course, we have these prolonged drought conditions in the West. And this plan helps assure an emergency response in those conditions. Just Sunday, we saw a fire in the Joy Lake Road area, south of the Mount Rose Highway. And fortunately, through the timely and effective response of the men and women of the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and other emergency service responders, that fire was controlled to just a few acres. And the people I know in that neighborhood are certainly appreciative of the, the response that was received. And this is an important, an important plan, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about that concern this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have nobody else signed in.
All right, we will close public comment. Commissioner Jung, will you take us through the, the donations?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
You started it to do, but it was in a different item.
Yeah, sorry, I stepped over all around that. So, I would like to direct the public to the consent 7F as in Frank. And in these, I don't know if you know this, but we are given discretionary funds as the five commissioners to spend as we see fit, obviously, with lots of rules, I can't just give you $1,000. And I want to call attention to the Vice Chairwoman for District One, Commissioner Alexis Hill, who's not here today, because she's representing us at the Tahoe Summit with all the hot shots up there, which I think all of us have done that at one point or another. I'm just glad somebody from Washoe County's up there. And so, this is the first meeting she's ever missed, too. She texted me, that really made her nervous. So, I'm happy to give, to say her name and let you know what she's put her money to. She put $1,000 towards the Tahoe Fund, which is to help this Lake Tahoe Summit, very important to us. One of the most important pieces of real estate we own is Washoe County, I believe, is the shoreline up in Incline Village and the great property taxes we get from up there. And she will be up there today, along with that donation, to make sure that we have great interstate and federal plans to keep that lake the way you have seen it all of your life, probably, if you've been here, which is, it has the same purity as ivory soap, and we'd like to keep it that way, us locals would like to keep it that way. And then, we also have 7F as in Frank, too, and this is from our Chairman, Vaughn Hartung, probably the biggest champion besides, not besides, in concert with Mayor Shivi, in making sure that all of us who are able are involved with the Donor Network West. He's given $2,500 towards that. And it's for keepsake remembrances, items for donor families. That's a very difficult decision to make for a family, whether the person gave their wishes ahead of time or not. So, this is something that the Chairman is well aware of. His wife was a donor to his daughter, who's just, if you've ever seen her, she looks like a supermodel from Hollywood and also Stanford educated. I don't know how that ever happens, but it happened here. And she's a recipient from her own mother, a kidney. And so, I'm so proud of our Chairman in making sure that every one of us, I took my ID out, and I've lost it, every one of us has a heart on our ID should something bad come befall us. You can have my eyes and ears and, and all of the special parts. And, Mr. Chairman, I just, I've, I've watched you do this for so long. It is, for me, you've educated me so much, it's a non, we don't even think about it anymore. Everybody's a donor, because we've seen how beautiful your daughter has turned out, and it matters. So, thank you for giving that money, so that people can have a, a special ceremony as well for the people who are donating, to say goodbye to their family and to have a keepsake, that their family is still living. I have a friend who died in a bad car accident, and her eyes are still being seen through. So, that makes me, it's kind of, talk about woo-woo and voodoo. That kind of puts us in the middle of like, alive and not alive. So, I really appreciate all of your personal work on this. You also are recommending $5,000 to Moms on the Run. I know you're very involved in that, too. That's for breast cancer survivors, that Pinocchio's, I believe, does, which is out in his district. And so, Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to tell you, thank you. And Madam Vice Chairwoman, thank you for being up there at Tahoe, making sure somebody from Washoe's up there, that they don't muddy our lake, those Californians, and Douglas County. So, I'm really proud of this board, and especially you, Mr. Chairman, as I'm sure your family and especially your wife and daughter are, that you've, you've all taken this on as a family goal. And that's often how it helps, happens, that we have these people who are giant advocates, because they've suffered through such a thing, and they know what, how hard this really is. And even with a beautiful, living, fabulous daughter, the hardship that this family went through, and probably is still healthcare-wise going through, because it's forever once you get a donation. But it's so wonderful and remarkable, and we are all better, because your daughter's name is, what is her name?
My daughter?
Yes.
Aleah.
I knew it was a A-L. Aleah is still here, and she is a practicing physician's assistant, Stanford-trained, in Reno, Nevada. So, no matter what, that's, that was the best contribution you ever gave, Mr. Chairman, to the, to the cause, but thank you for always keeping this front and center and keeping us educated as, as a community. And I, I'll say it again on the record, I don't think any other family's done more for the Donor Network services and to get the word out. And they have a great story, right? And they're good-looking. They're all good-looking people, too, so we can use them in the front ads. So, it's all working out for all of us. But, Mr. Chairman, thank you for paying it forward and keeping us educated. None of us ever know when we might be in that situation, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I, I'm just going to say a, a couple of quick words here before we move on to a different item in 7F. This was, this was intended to be in remembrance of, of Haley Ponti. Dave and Nancy Ponti have been great advocates for organ donation. Their daughter passed suddenly. They've, they've, they've really did not roll up in a corner. They have been out, they have been advocating, they have been fighting, and, and have been just, just great proponents of, of these programs. And so, this is really about, about the Ponti family and in remembrance of, of Ms. Haley, because I, I think it's, I think it's important to just acknowledge when, when a teenager decides that it's important to put on their driver's license of, of, of organ donation. By the way, her, her passing had nothing to do with any, it was not her fault, it was a, it was just a, she had an allergic reaction, sadly. And, and so, it's a, it's very, very tragic. She was a beautiful young woman, and, and the, the Pontis have done a phenomenal job, they've just done an incredible job of, of staying involved and keeping, keeping things going for, for other families. And so, I, I cherish my relationship with, with them, my wife and I both cherish our relationships with them, and, and with both of these organizations, Donor Network West and Nevada Donor Network Foundation. And you guys do so much in the community, and you don't realize how important this is, and I'll, I'll, I'll stop blithering on here and, and get to other important matters. You don't realize how important this is until somebody that's either in your family or, or somebody that you know has to go on dialysis or, or needs some form of a transplant. And in fact, a fellow that I have known for quite a number of years, he and I were talking the other day, and, and he said, oh, he says, I'm on my way to dialysis. And he's an older fellow. I say older, he's, he's really not older, but he thinks he is, and he doesn't want to put himself on the UNOS list. And I would tell you, if you are on dialysis, if you, if you have issues with any organ, get yourself on the, on the UNOS list. Work with these foundations, they will help you go through the, the process of, of getting the paperwork filled out, because you just don't know. And, and the, the methodologies have changed from a few years back, where they would, they would not use what they considered to be compromised organs, and now they're using them in many cases for older folks or for folks who, who have other issues. And, and it, and it really does help the entire community out. So, again, thank you, Commissioner Jung, for acknowledging that. Thank you, Ms. Miles, for that acknowledgement. That was, that was just very lovely. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item F, 7F3, because I think that that's also very important.
They haven't voted yet.
Oh, you haven't voted?
You haven't?
No.
No, 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 no. It is an acknowledgement. This is item, we're still on item seven. Mr. Manager, just do item 7F3.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will do that. Recommendation to Acknowledge Receipt of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 from the Government Finance Officers Association.
You guys are here. Is, is that, Lori, is that what you're here for? Is this acknowledgement? Will you guys come down front?
That's amazing.
This is, this is, again, exactly. No, 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 no. All of you, let's go. You're all looking at each other like, no, we're not going down there. Yes.
The next thing in the back.
Yes.
Miss.
We're not going to let you guys get away that easily.
Mr. Chair, if, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I was.
Absolutely.
I was at the Nevada League of Cities Conference last week, down in Clark County, down in Las Vegas. There was a presentation made by an outfit, I won't give them, I won't glorify them by name, that consults with contractors who do major infrastructure projects for local governments and municipalities. They, and they advise them on what financial amenities they need to put in their proposals so that they can be considered for federal grants. We're actually going to have a meeting with them to learn more about how we can get more proficient at that. But the point I wanted to make is, imagine my delight when she showed a map of Washoe County, and then she brought up our CIP and our operating budget, budget books from prior years, and basically shared with the group that this is one of the best municipalities we've seen, in terms of how they report and manage their budgets. So, I, I haven't shared that with Lori and her team, but that actually happened last Wednesday in, in Las Vegas, and I, I want to thank them for their collective efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And so, this is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year 2122 for the Government Finance Officers Associate, from the Government Finance Officers Association. Ms. Cook? Yes. Would you, would you introduce your team? Because you have, you have an amazing, I know they're all, they're, they're like giving me the, the evil eye now, because, because they had to come down front, but that's okay.
Okay. For the record, Lori Cook, Washoe County Budget Manager, and I did warn them, so, you know, again. But, so, the budget book, obviously, we don't come up with the numbers ourselves, but we do put this together, we submit it, we are hands-on, some of us are more technically capable than others. I'm not going to go through the matrix of that. But for this particular budget book and this particular award for this year, this is the team. So, we have Gohar Barzagian and Patsy Buxton, I'm going in alphabetical order, Kari Estrada and Brianna McBride. And that is, that's our team, that's our mighty team of five.
And, and Ms. Lori Cook, you yourself. And I, I want to, I just want to make note of something here. These folks can work anywhere. They can go into finance anywhere. They can go into finance at any major company in, not just in Washoe County, but in the nation that they choose, right? So, that's the, that's the caliber of, of people that we have in our organization. And I want to thank all of you for being in Washoe County, the hard work that you do, making sure that everything is straight, and, and, you know, I've, I've looked at, I don't know how many audits, and, and they, they just, we get, we get clean audit after clean audit after clean audit. So, I just, I mean, and that comes down to you guys just paying attention, because, I mean, you know, when I start looking at numbers after a while, it can, it can be very daunting. It's a daunting task. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Manager, from you?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners? Okay.
It's all women, so thank you.
Agreed. Absolutely agreed. Thank you so much, team. We have thoroughly gone through all of this stuff, we've asked questions, we have taken public comment. I'm looking for a motion for item number seven. Have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Herman. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. That now takes us, Commissioner Lucy, would you propose a block vote for us?
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, it'd be my honor to suggest a block vote for this morning's meeting, and this would be in the form of a motion. At this time, I recommend that we place in block items eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 this morning, sir.
Um.
And 19.
19.
And 19.
There we go.
And 19.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Lucy for items eight through 19, second by Commissioner Jung. Mr. Manager, would you read those items in, and then we'll take public comment?
Item eight is Community Services, Services recommends to set the order of alternatives to represent the Washoe County Planning Commission on the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission in the event the regularly appointed planning commission members are unavailable to serve as outlined in the staff report. Item nine is a comptroller recommends to approve the settlement of the claim of plaintiff Samantha Correll, individually as the natural mother of deceased Rashad Alexander Kerr, Samantha Correll, and Sheri L. Brown, as co-special administrators for the estate of Rashad Alexander Kerr versus Ramos Rodriguez, for a total sum of $150,000 for all claims against all Washoe County defendants, as outlined in the staff report. against all Washto County defendants as outlined in the staff report. Number 10 is a District Court recommends to retroactively acknowledge the grant award from the State of Nevada Administrative Office of the Courts to the Second Judicial District Court in the amount of $1,600, $1,68,889. No match required as outlined in the staff report. Number 11 is the Health Department District recommends to approve the overfill of the Administrative Health Services Officer not to exceed five months. Recruitment of the AHSO overfill as a classified position temporarily allow for both a classified and unclassified AHSO appointment and allow the district health officer for five months. One additional unclassified appointment for the Deputy District Health Officer position effective September 26, 2022 as outlined in the staff report. Number 12 is Manager's Office recommends to acknowledge $1,650,000 cross-functional appropriation transfer from the Public Works to Public Safety within the Capital Improvement Fund, net fiscal impact of zero as outlined in the staff report. Item 13 is a request by the County Manager to initiate amendments to the Washto County Code, Chapter 45, Public Welfare, Washto County Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is to ensure that, that the Washto County Code reflects Washto County's current capacity to directly administer the Washto County Affordable Housing Trust Fund as well as reflect the county's housing and homeless services priorities and to direct the county clerk to submit the request to the District Attorney's Office for preparation of a proposed ordinance in accordance with Washto County Code 2.040 as outlined in the staff report. Item 14 is the Manager's Office recommends to approve a letter of intent for the Fiscal Year 2022 Emergency Management Performance Grant stating that the Nevada, State of Nevada Division of Emergency Management is awarding $225,555.20 with a $225,555.20 county match required for Fiscal Year 2022, including funds to be used for travel retroactive from October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2023. If approved, authorize the County Manager or his designee to sign the grant award documents when received and direct the Comptroller's Office to reimburse the general fund and to make the necessary budget amendments as outlined in the staff report. Sheriff's Office recommends to approve the Axon contract under sole source purchasing exemption of the Washto County Sheriff's Office and enter a new contract with Axon, with Axon Enterprises Inc. for a four-month, a 54-month term at cost not to exceed $270,447.50 to support body worn cameras, fleet car cameras, and less lethal tasers and other support services offered by Axon Enterprises Inc. as outlined in the staff report. Item number 16 is a Technology Services recommends to approve the enterprise agreement between Washto County and Environmental Systems Research, Inc. Institute Inc. for software and services related to the county's use of geographic information systems for a three-year contract term for Fiscal Years 2023 through 2025 in an amount not to exceed $923,050 as outlined in the staff report. Item 17 is a Technology Services recommends to approve Fiscal Year 2022-2023 renewal of soft, software licenses, software subscriptions, and sole source purchases of computer and network hardware through joiner with National Association of State Procurement Officers master price agreements for State of Nevada with CDW Government, Inc. and approve expenditures not to exceed $1,190,000 as outlined in the staff report. Item 18 is Technology Services recommends to approve Fiscal Year 2022-2023 renewal of contracts, maintenance agreements, licenses, professional services, and sole source purchases of computer network equipment through joiner with the National Association of State Procurement Officers master price agreements for State of Nevada with E Plus Technology, Inc. and approve expenditures not to exceed $1,645,000 as outlined in the staff report. Technology Services recommends to approve Fiscal Year 2022-2023 renewal of contracts, maintenance agreements, licenses, and sole source purchases of desktop computers, laptop servers, storage, disk backup, and associated computer hardware through joiner with National Association of State Procurement Officers master price agreement for State of Nevada with Dell EMC, Inc. and approve expenditures not to exceed $1,691,000 as outlined in the staff report. That's item 19, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manager? Commissioners, any questions on items eight through 19? Okay? All right. Madam Clerk, would you call, do we have any public comment on any of those items?
Mr. Chairman, surprisingly, there is nobody signed in for any of these items.
Okay, I will close public comment, I will bring it back to the board. We have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, I believe second by Commissioner Jung. We have asked for public comment. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen.
I'm having issues with this.
Technical difficulties.
Here we go.
Got it?
Got it.
It really is. Six, I mean, six years in.
Okay.
There we go.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, that takes us now to item number 20. Mr. Manager, would you please take us into item number 20?
Item 20 is a public hearing, Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 22-0002 and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 22-0002 for Palomino Farms. The recommendation to number one, adopt an amendment of the Washto County Master Plan Warm Springs Area Plan and the Warm Springs Specific Plan to reconfigure and adjust the master plan category on several parcel, parcels of land, plus or minus 890.35 acres of suburban residential, plus or minus 235 dot, point 41 acres of rural, and plus or minus 18.82 acres of commercial to 889.08 acres of suburban residential, plus or minus 240.61 acres of rural, and 18, plus or minus 18.78 acres of commercial, which will concentrate all areas of commercial master plan designations near the intersection of Pyramid Highway and Whiskey Springs Road. And number two, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment and the finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by regional planning authorities, to adopt an amendment to the Warm Springs Regulatory Zone Map to reconfigure and adjust the regulatory zone on several parcels of land from plus or minus 867.83 acres of low-density suburban LDS, one dwelling per acre, plus or minus 235.41 acres of general rural, which is one dwelling per 40 acres, plus or minus 18.82 acres of, of general commercial, plus or minus 12.29 acres of public slash semi-public facilities, and plus or minus 10.24 acres of parks and rec, recreation to, to, plus or minus 866.28 acres of low-density suburban, plus or minus 240.61 acres of general rural, plus or minus 18.86 acres of general commercial, plus or minus 12.63 acres of public slash semi-public facilities, and plus or minus 10.09 acres of parks and recreation, which will concentrate all areas of commercial regulatory zone near the intersection of Pyramid Highway and Whiskey Springs Road and relocate the public and semi-public facilities and parks and rec regulatory zones adjacent, adjacent to Whiskey Springs Road, approximately three-quarters of a mile east of the intersection with Pyramid Highway. Palomino Farms is the applicant and the property owner. The subject parcels, APNs 077-090-3, 070-090-07, 077-090-13, 077-090-14, 077-090-15, 077 dot, dash, 340 dot, dash, 04, 077 dash 340, dash, 05, 077 340 dash 44, and 077 dash 340 dash 45. A total of 1100, plus or minus 1144 acres in size and are located on both the north and south sides of Whiskey Springs Road, beginning at Pyramid Highway on the west and continuing approximately two miles to the east. They are situated within the Warm Springs Area Plan and Warm Springs Specific Plan boundaries. If approved, authorize the Chair to sign the resolutions to that effect.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Herman, I'm gonna go to you first. What's your desire on this? Would you like staff to give us a, a report on this? Or are you good? And, and before I, I let you have the mic, because this is, this is essentially, and I'll just take us to item, page three, rather, of the staff report. Under background, it says the proposed reconfiguration of commercial suburban rural land and rural land provides for the potential to keep large areas of agricultural use and reduces the number of allowable dwelling units by approximately seven. Which is, which is, yeah, which is, I mean, this is, and we've seen this before, and I don't want to call it a dense, a density transfer, but it's a reconfiguration. Essentially, there's nothing that's changing within the boundaries of this area. It's just that it's, they're just sort of moving the pieces around. So Commissioner Herman?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This property was, at one time, Terra West was the company that was going to develop it. And so a lot of this, little spot of this here and there and everywhere spread around, kind of was due to that. And so this is just kind of a, like I say, reconfiguration. And, and I personally have, have requested during the time we were talking with the Regional Plan to have some acreage set aside for commercial. We need a post office terribly. And that would be the perfect place to put that. And inland on, on a, basically private road wasn't a real good place to have it. So being on, right off of Pyramid is, is a much more suitable place for it. So years ago, I moved here. I mean, I've been here for probably longer than most people have been living here that were born here. But anyhow, if you can figure that out. So during this time, there's been dozens of people, probably more like, more than dozens, whatever that is, between there and hundreds. Anyhow, so many times people have walked to my house and said, we ran out of fuel.
Yes.
And so I, I have always offered them a five gallon bucket that I always had sitting there, you know, and, and or drove them back to their car. And, I mean, this happened hundred, lots of times. Anyhow, I lost track of how many times, but, so there's, there's a need for a place for the people in that area and all the people that travel between Pyramid Lake and town. And, and so I, I'm very much for this because just, if not anything, just for the commercial section of it, because it's very needed. Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, a little town center. I get it. That's how Spanish Springs, that's how Spanish Springs started. We had a little store that, that was there. That was the only thing in the whole entire valley.
Sky wrench.
Commissioner Herman, did you, did, did you want a staff report on this? Did you want staff to give us any explanations on this?
I'll, I'll leave that up to you if you feel that the public needs that.
Commissioners, do you? So I, I want to read one other thing, Commissioners, before we, before we go into this, and this can be found on page two of the staff report under previous action, and it says, "On June 7th, 2022, the Washto County Planning Commission held a public hearing to review the proposed requests. On a motion made by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Commissioner Payton, the Planning Commission adopted the proposed master plan amendment and recommended approval of the Regulatory Zone Amendment. The Planning Commission further recommended that the County Commission adopt both amendments. Both votes carried unanimously with all seven Commissioners present: Chesney, Payton, Nelson, Doncheck, Flick, Phillips, and Savileczeck." Okay? So it was a, it was a unanimous vote. Okay? Commissioners, would you like to, I mean, this is, again, this is really just moving things around. This is not, this is not a project. It's just a, I, I, and, and it's improper for me to say this, but it's just like this, it's a density transfer, where we just take density from one place and move it to another and, and, and in more appropriate places. And by the way, if this were a PUD in one of the cities, those things are typically allowed. They just allow them to, they just, they can say, look, we're gonna have the shopping center in a more appropriate place, people, where people can access it and, and next to a road as opposed to, you know, we thought it was gonna develop this way, but it didn't. And so I, I, I just, I see this as a real positive for the value. And I, I, I thank you, Commissioner Herman, for the, the, the background on that. All right? Madam Clerk, it, it looks like you guys are gonna get off without having to talk about this much. It's all in the staff report. It's, it is fairly simple. Is there any public comments on this item?
I have, nobody signed in except Commissioner Lucy would like to speak.
Okay, no, I'm coming back to the board. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that this is a phenomenal move forward for the Warm Springs area. It makes me very happy to, if, if you're ready for a motion, I would propose a motion at this time.
Actually, I'm gonna let Commissioner Herman make the motion.
Okay.
Commissioner Lucy.
All right.
Commissioner Herman? Why don't you just say, motion to approve as listed in the staff report? I mean, that'll, that'll be just, that'll be just fine, because I think it's all outlined in the staff report.
Not a wind otherwise. Okay, so moved according to what is written here.
In the staff report.
In the staff report.
Okay. Do I have a second? Have a motion by Commissioner Herman, second by Commissioner Lucy. We have asked for public comment. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, I believe unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen, ladies and gentlemen. It does, carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Mr. Maxley? No, Mr. Manager, I'm not gonna let you do this. Madam Clerk, would you take us into item 21?
Mr. Chairman, if you would like Mr. Manager to open it up and read it, and then there is a bill that will be introduced if the item.
Right, that's what I thought we would, okay. I, I thought you would introduce the bill first, but I'm, I'm gonna, okay, I'll let the manager go ahead and, and open this. Item number 21, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Public hearing, item 21 is a public hearing regarding rehearing of Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 21-0008 and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 21-005 for Highland Village Phase Two. The recommendation is to, number one, amend the Washto County Master Plan Sun Valley Area Plan Appendix C maps to reconfigure the boundaries of the suburban residential master plan designation, decreasing the designation from 16.7 to 14.7 acres and reconfigure the boundaries of the rural master plan designation, increasing the designation from 1.67 to 3.68 acres on the three adjacent parcels, APNs 508-020-04, dash, 42, and dash, 44. If approved, if adopted, the master plan amendment will take effect after a determination of conformance with the Truckee Meadows. with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission, and, two, approve, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment and a favorable conformance review by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission, a Regulatory Zone Amendment to the Sun Valley Regulatory Zone Map to change the regulatory zone on three parcels from 16.706 acres of low-density suburban LDS, which is one dwelling unit per acre, and 1.676 acres of general rural, which is one dwelling unit per 40 acres, to 14.702 acres of high-density suburban, HDS, seven dwelling units per acre, and 3.6 acres of general rural on 18.382 acres, and reconfigure the boundaries of the proposed HDS and GR zones on the three adjacent parcels. Those would be APNs 508-020-04, dash 42, and dash 44. And introduce and conduct a first reading of an ordinance pursuant to Nevada Revised Statutes 278-0201 through 278-0207, adopting a development agreement between Washoe County and LC Highland Two, LLC for Highland Village Two, which limits the gross density to four and a half dwelling units per acre for the plus or minus 18.3-acre project area, APNs 508-020-04, dash 42, and dash 44, for a maximum of 82 total dwelling units. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed master plan and regulatory zone amendment with a condition precedent of adoption of the accompanying development agreement. May adopt the proposed master plan and regulatory zone amendments without the accompanying development agreement. May further modify the proposed master plan amendment and refer the matter back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS 278-220, Section Four, or may deny the proposed amendments after the public hearing. If the Board introduces and conducts the first reading of the ordinance, the Board shall set the public hearing, second reading, and possible adoption of the ordinance for September 13th, 2022. And if adopted, further authorize the chair to execute the final development agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you give us some bill numbers, please?
This will be Bill Number 1881, an ordinance pursuant to Nevada Revised Statutes 278.0201 through 278.0207, adopting a development agreement between Washoe County and LC Highland Two, LC, LLC for Highland Village Two, which limits the gross density to 4.5 dwelling units per acre for the plus or minus 18.3-acre project area, APN numbers 508-202-04, dash 042, and dash 44, for a maximum of 82 dwelling units.
Okay.
So, I'll need an introduction.
Okay, thank you so much. Before we open this item, Commissioner Herman, do you have anything that you'd like to say? This is your district again.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been around for a while. We've kicked it around for a while. And I think that, you know, I know we had a comment earlier this morning in comment, public comment, about the zoning. But actually, this zoning now is less than it was when we started. So, I think that we can, we can allow this because it's, it follows the rules, so, that we have set for them.
Good.
So.
All right, very good. Is there a need for a staff report? This is the, this is the second time that we've heard this. Okay, so, one of the things that I'm going to mention also, if you look, this is item number 21, page three of six on the staff report. It says, "On December 7th, 2021, the Washoe County Planning Commission heard the master plan and regulatory zone amendment requests in question and unanimously recommended adoption of the amendments as proposed." Okay? All true. And so, we do have a recommendation. The only thing that I would say in the future, Commissioners, when we enter into these kinds of agreements, we're not going to go backwards on this, because, at least in my mind, and we certainly can if the Board wants to do this, where we have to send it back to the Planning Commission. But in my mind, in the future, what I would recommend we do is put a time limit on these kinds of developmental agreements and say, "Look, you have to do this within five years." And I think, or whatever the number is, seven years. And it doesn't matter the number that we apply to it. But it doesn't leave them hanging out there as we have seen in many cases. And we've, and we've heard from a number of people, including people on our planning commission, that we have all these approved, not yet built, you know, parcels in the county. And nobody knows when those would be coming in. So, I would, I think that, I think that we have thoroughly vetted this. This is just my opinion. If the Board feels differently, we can certainly do something different. But I think in the future, we need to, when these developmental agreements come to us, we need to put a, just put a time limit on them. Okay? Commissioners, is there, anyone else have any comments on this item? Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
We have Mr. Ken Crater.
Good morning, for the record, Ken Crater. I just want to say quickly, I see where this is going. But I think you all know, I do a lot of work in my projects, a lot of public outreach. This has been well-vetted. And in the future, on projects like this, I've been talking to staff, I'm going to take care of this from the get-go and look at a combination of zoning, of say, MDS and HDS, to limit the zoning, to limit the number of units outright. That way, we won't even need a development agreement. And then it's in perpetuity, and everybody knows what they get. I've made some very firm commitments to the neighbors out there. That's what we're going to bring forward. And I just think that, I hear you loud and clear, but I think there's even a better way to do business in the county than a development agreement. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Nobody else signed in.
All right, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back to the board. We've bypassed the need for a staff report because this is the second time we've heard this. I, Commissioner Herman, would you like to introduce Bill Number 1881?
I would, except I didn't get the other number written down. So, I'll let you do that, thank you.
No, there is no, there is no other number. It's just Bill 1881. Just give us an introduction with the, with the.
Okay.
Eight, 1-8-8-1.
1-8-8-1.
Yes, correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Bill 1881, okay? With a, and with a caveat, Commissioner Herman, of a second reading to occur on September 13th, 2022. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
I made that, I will make that motion. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Is that okay, Madam Counsel?
Mr. Chair, I think, I know this is a long, a long, a long. It says, "The Board is going to be adopting the proposed master plan and regulatory zone amendments and setting the, introducing the ordinance and setting the second reading." So, I would ask that you.
Can she just outline it as listed in the staff report? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Herman?
I move to adopt it according to the master plan as written in the, in the context here.
Okay, is that okay, Madam Clerk?
Second.
Are we okay with that? Okay, so she's introducing Bill Number 1881 with, she's introducing Bill Number 1881, and then the adoptions as listed in the staff report with the second reading to occur on September 13th, 2022. Okay? All right, I just want to make sure we have all that on the record. So, and actually, we don't need a second, but we do, but we do need, so we do need, do we need a second motion on the?
No, I think if you go ahead and adopt, you're just basically adopting your, it says, the new proposed master plan and the amendments. And if you do that, then you're introducing the ordinance. So, it's kind of all in one.
Okay, so we're all good now?
Yep, you're good.
All right, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioners, thank you so much. I'm sorry.
The clerk is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe it's two separate items. You have to approve the master plan and then introduce the.
Okay, all right. Looking for a motion to approve the master plan amendment?
There we go.
Regulatory zone amendments? So moved? Motion by Herman, second by Lucy. Is there any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, bring it back to the board. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're going to adopt, we're going to introduce Bill Number 1881, correct? With the second reading on September 13th, 2022.
So moved.
Okay? All right, so we have a motion. Actually, we don't need a motion. That's just an introduction. Okay?
Thank you.
Are we covered, Madam Clerk?
We are good.
Are you comfortable? All right, all right. Thank you so much for everyone coming out on this. Okay? That takes us now to item number 22. Madam Clerk, our final public comment. Actually, Mr. Manager, our final public comment. I'm getting ahead of myself. I apologize.
That's all right, Mr. Chair, that's okay. Item 22 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We have one email submitted by Elise Weatherly, and nobody signed in in chambers.
Please enter that into the record, and we have no one in the chambers. We will close public comment. Item Number 23, Mr. Manager, would you take us into that?
Item 23 is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include Boards and Commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas. And, Mr. Chair, I just want to confirm for Commissioner Herman that the Sierra Care folks were paid.
Okay, very good. And that's all you have, Mr. Manager? Okay? Commissioners, anyone else? Commissioner Lucy, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of things just wanted to put on the record. I did participate last Friday in a tour of our beautiful, wonderful jail up on Par Boulevard. I want to thank Sergeant Christensen and Deputy Cottle for taking me around to, you know, as part of our duties here as Commissioners to check out the conditions of the jail. And I have to say, Commissioner Jung and I and a number of staff have had the opportunity to travel around the country and look at jails. And I still say to this day that we have one of the cleanest, most efficient jails in the country. And things look like to be working in just tip-top. And some of the new, I got to see some of the new improvements that they've done to the entrance and what we've done in regards to providing more safety for not only the public and those visiting the jail, but, you know, conducting business through the jail. So, great things to see at the jail. And then, I want to commend, again, once again, the park staff and all the public community that helped participate in Dragon Lights. I got to go and participate and see Dragon Lights, and it was absolutely amazing, as usual. I mean, just absolutely stunning. My kids loved it, my parents loved it, my, everybody had a really good time. It was phenomenal, lots of great commitment from those individuals. And just putting on what a beautiful, a beautiful event within such a gorgeous arboretum. We're very lucky to have had Dragon Lights come back this year and participate with us. So, thank you for all those individuals that had that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you for bringing that to me and to remind me that I did have a tour of the jail as well. And I am grateful that I was able to do that because I think we need to maybe reconsider. They are still a little short-staffed there, and they could sure use some more help. It's almost to the point of being dangerous. While I was there, there was an emergency, and it was quite evident that they do need additional help. So, the funding will have to come through us, and we're going to have to talk about that at a future meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. So, as for me, we have, Mr. Solero's still sitting in the back. Mr. Solero, let's make sure that we coordinate with RTC on Highland Ranch Parkway. At some point, we're going to have to, I want to, I just want to make sure that it's, that it's on our CIP, on RTC CIP, and moved up appropriately. And that will also include, and by the way, it already is, Commissioner Lucy and myself have worked on making sure that Seventh Street and O'Brien Pass is also on that because it's in desperate need of upgrades going from Golden Valley to Sun Valley. That, that's, there's more development happening up there. And so, we really need to coordinate some of those issues. Did I shake anything loose for anyone else? Okay. Commissioners, thank you so much. Everyone who is left in the audience, thank you so much for all of your time. We are adjourned.